The largest earthquake was also a slip.
Right.
So.
Nine point nine.
That doesn't necessarily.
I remember seeing an earthquake last week, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, it was.
No, it was.
It was not. It's pretty big.
Are we ready to rock?
We are live, yes, we are.
Good evening. This is the September third meeting of the Lincoln City Planning Commission. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance, we fly out of the United States of America. And to the world of sports and science, one nation, under our own. In the name of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kate, can we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Miles Schlesinger. Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Marcy Baker.
Here.
Josh Brainerd.
I'm here.
Lenny Nelson.
Here.
Marie McFarland is absent, and Patty Crowen.
Here.
Lindsey, any agenda changes or revisions?
I would like to add, right after Agenda Item Number two, an opportunity for a public comment. We do have a member of the community here that would like to speak on items not related to the agenda this evening.
So that will be right after this?
Yes, I would make it two eight.
Okay. Anything else?
No. You did receive some handouts in front of you at the dais for our Item Number Nine, Planning Commission Training, which includes our rules and procedures of March 2015 and section of LCMC Chapter 2.08.
Okay, and we also received something from the National Coast Trail Association?
Correct. This is a public comment for you to consider during Item Number 6.2, our Comp Plan Amendment.
Okay. Thank you. All right, public comment.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Deanna Hinton. I am currently a city council member and also a past planning commissioner. And so I really wanted to just drop by and say two things. One, I wanted to officially welcome the three new commissioners, Josh and Marcy and Lenny. Although this is Lenny's second time around, she'll. She'll be ready to go. And also, the other thing I wanted to say is a special thank you to Kate Dashil for. I'm gonna cry. For being the exceptional human being that she is and how supportive and being the glue that held Planning Commission and the Planning Department together for a very long time. And we're all gonna miss you.
Thanks, Deanna.
Thank you.
And Deanna and Joe, we do, there is cake. So you can stick around or come back. Yes, we all, we all are concerned about, about the glue disappearing for, for the Planning Commission. Because Kate, Kate is, is clearly exceptional, so we'll talk about that later. Okay, and as you teed up so well, we do have new planning commissioners, Lenny Nelson and Marcy Baker. So I, I don't know, Lindsey, did you want to introduce or should we do self introductions and let them spend a minute or two?
Yeah, I would offer an opportunity for both Lenny and Marcy to spend a minute or two about your history yourself. And then if the other commissioners want to give a little brief background on your background and prior experience as well, I think that would help for both Marcy and Lenny to understand where you guys come from.
My name is Lenny Nelson. I've lived in Lincoln City for about 29 years. I have a husband. I also have children, but they're not here. I was on the Planning Commission probably in the 90s several times. So, but I think a lot of things have changed since then, so I'm anxious to see where we're going now.
I'm Marcy Baker. I've lived in Lincoln City about 23 years, left for about five to go to school in Eugene. But I own a business in Ocean Lake, been there about a year and a half. And I'm just very passionate about Lincoln City and know there's a lot of changes coming up and really wanted to participate in, in all of that.
Okay. Miles?
I'm Miles Schlesinger, and I came to Lincoln City in 1955 and have owned a vacation house on Devil's Lake since 1990. And I retired here in 2010. And I wanted to be involved. And through Kate Dashil's help, I think I have become involved. And I'm looking forward to Lindsey and Anne-Marie joining the team because there's new, fresh blood in the community. And I, I think that's very important. And I'm looking forward to being here long enough to see the economy grow with good-paying jobs rather than some of the, the jobs that are strictly limited to the vacation tourist season, which is a very short season. I hope that we can make some good progress.
I'm Patty Crowen, and I have had the honor of being the chair for, I don't know, 30-some years or something, it feels like. But it hasn't been quite that long. I'm a retired geologist, and I came here with my husband. We're working on five years now. And I've always been involved on a volunteer basis in communities that I've lived in. And Deanna got, got me involved here on the Planning Commission. I've enjoyed it. And we've now, our new, our new staff. And so we're moving in the right direction, I believe. And I'm looking forward to working with both of you.
I'm Steve Griffiths, and I'm serving in my fifth year on the Planning Commission. Prior to that, I served for three years on the Parks and Recreation Board. I've been retired for 10 years. I retired from a national environmental organization that was based in San Francisco. And my family's association goes, with the Lincoln City area, goes back much further than 10 years. So I've seen this community change, change, and change again. Welcome to the Planning Commission.
My name's Josh Brainerd. I moved here about three years ago, and I started managing the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District. And that's currently where I'm at right now. They haven't tired of me yet. So I get the opportunity to work with a lot of great community members and leaders like Miles that's been here for such a long time. So he's a boon, you know, an endless vast well of knowledge and information. So I urge you to, to give him a call if you, you get stuck on anything or want some history or background on anything. But welcome to the Planning Commission.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the minutes from our regular meeting of August 20th. I have a, a couple of corrections to them that I didn't get to you. I apologize for not getting them to you earlier. But there's a, a sentence at the bottom of packet, page four, that might be missing some words. The sentence reads, "Mr. Apicello said the issue of reducing landscaping to provide parking based on a geologic setback." Period. So.
Fragment.
Some, yeah, there's, I think that was during our discussion about the, the change of setbacks on a bluff lot. So that, that needs to just be fixed. And then on packet, page seven, in the second motion, I think Miles made the motion and Commissioner is missing after his name. Okay. So.
All right.
Any other edits from commissioners, changes, suggestions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of August 20th with the corrections noted.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are done. We have a final order and a res, a final order on the appeal, the Thomas VRD Land Use Appeal. So on August 20th, the Planning Commission deliberated on a VRD Land Use Appeal that was filed by Joshua and Dana Thomas. The appeal was concerning the Planning Director's decision approving a vacation rental dwelling with a condition limiting the VRD to two bedrooms based on availability of onsite parking. There are actually four bedrooms at this particular house, but parking only for two. At that meeting, the Commission tentatively agreed to an oral decision to deny the appeal. And this is the final order for that. So need a motion for the final order?
A motion for the final order of the appeal, is that correct?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we have the final order. Okay, we are now to Agenda Item Six, which is a public hearing and deliberations. It is now 6:12, so the public hearing is open for file. Did you want to say something?
If I may, staff is actually requesting for ZOA 2019-08 Design Review Standards to continue the public hearing to September 17th till a time for the city attorney to review the ordinance.
Okay. So we need a motion.
I move to continue the public hearing to September 17th for ZOA 2019-08 Design Review Standards.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Who was the second on that motion?
Lenny.
Lenny.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we have a public hearing on CPA 2019-02, which is the North Lincoln City Land Use Map and Text Amendment. It's now 6:13. The public hearing is now open for File CPA 2019-02, the North Lincoln City Land Use Map and Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment. This concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Goals, Policies, and Map, creating a new future land use map, or FLUM, designation of the North Lincoln City Mixed Use, specifying zoning districts as open space and residential R1-7.5, and establishing a holding place for two new zoning districts to implement the North Lincoln City Mixed Use designations. The proposal amends the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Goals and Policies to authorize statutory development agreements to modify or exempt developments from otherwise applicable provisions of the Zoning and Land Development Code. The Planning Commission's role in this process is to consider any written or oral comments or testimony as well as information from staff and present a recommendation to the city council, who will hold an additional public hearing. The city council may adopt the Planning Commission's recommendations, or they may take other action. The Planning Commission and city council will evaluate the plan using three criteria. First, does it conform with statewide planning goals? Second, does it conform with portions of the plan that are not being considered for change? And third, does it conform with applicable provisions of the Lincoln City Municipal Code? Providing oral or written testimony at this hearing gives you the right to make an appeal to Oregon's Land Use Board of Appeals in regard to this proposed Comprehensive Plan change, should you choose to do so. The failure to raise an issue at the public hearings in person or by letter, or the failure to provide sufficient specificity to allow the Planning Commission and/or city council an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. If you wish to speak, please. Are you, either of you gonna want to speak? Okay. Okay, will staff please present their report?
Yes. So the staff report starts on page packet 15 of your materials provided this evening. I went through a little bit of history since the city has acquired some of the property up in the North Lincoln City area. The, in 2011, under Ordinance 2011-13, the city council of Lincoln City designated a total of 58.65 acres of land that was previously identified in the Villages Cascadehead Master Plan since 1998 as a scenic research area. In addition to that 58.65 acres, in 2014, the Planning Commission recommended and city council approved a land use map and rezone of approximately 35 acres known as the Knoll. And that is currently in our open space land use designation under the Comprehensive Plan, which was also previously part of the approved and valid Villages at Cascadehead Master Plan. In 2012, city council approved a 10-year extension for the Villages at Cascadehead Master Plan. That Villages' extension will expire date effective January 31st, 2023, unless another extension is requested. The plan dates back to the mid 90s. And at this point, let's see here. The, the order that was passed in 2012, giving a 10-year extension, does allow for the Planning Commission to consider additional extensions on unbuilt portions of land. However, it requires consistency with all applicable zoning and comprehensive ordinance in effect at time of the application. Due to the changes in the housing need, economy, environment, and recreation of the residents and visitors, the city's currently proposing additional changes to the city's owned land in North Lincoln City portions known as the Villages. We are not including in the map for tonight's consideration Blocks A, A'., B, C, and D. However, if the Planning Commission desires to consider adding these blocks to the amendment, staff recommends they be included as residential mixed structure designation. If these blocks are placed within the area, staff will update the maps and figure one of the ordinance in advance of city council.
Lindsey, did you provide us with a map that showed those areas in the packet?
Of one, A, no. No, I failed to do so, Chair. But I can provide one and pull it up for you for, in the meeting. And as, so, moving forward here. The, the reason for initiation of a Comprehensive Plan Text and Map Amendment for the north portion previously known as the Villages was done under 1788-030E of the Lincoln City Municipal Code. I had identified that moving forward with a Comprehensive Plan Text and Map Amendment for the area would solidify the preservation and development opportunities and provide opportunity for additional public engagement with the new concept plan that was revised in 2018 through the work of the previous director and city council. The, designating the area via Comprehensive Plan and Text will provide terms longer than what an unapproved master plan can provide. If the community is desiring the proposals and the vision that was stemmed from our consultants previously in 2018 with the circular development that preserves more environment area, preserves greater wetlands, and focuses more of the development into the center core, where some roadways are already developed up there. The proposed new land use designation, as it was originally presented to DLCD, encompassed the full portion of the Villages area proposed for the future land use, which is why the Planning Commission has the authority to discuss and consider adding back Blocks A, A', B, C, D of the master plan area. The text of the amendment requests deeded and dedicated open space, dense commercial mixed use within the center using a circular planning form, with high-density residential mixed use commercial on the immediate periphery of the commercial mixed uses. In addition to the intensities of mixed residential and commercial areas, staff proposed areas for limitation of development, including additional open space and parks lands that coordinate with the surrounding recreation and preservation areas. Since I provided that DLCD notice, I've been working with administration and thinking diligently about how to move forward the best practice for the village, for the area previously known as the Villages in North Lincoln City.
Needs a new name.
It needs a name, but we'll leave that for council. Let's see here. Based upon the conversations with administration and my own thoughts, I have split the proposal and made some adjustments to reduce the area impact from the initial submittal that was provided. What I did is I'm proposing placement and concentration of approximately 22 and a half acres of recreational resort mixed-use land designation. This would be the extent of any potential commercial development for the area by limiting it to the 20 acres that is in the center. The previous proposal that was sent to DLCD was broader, called the whole area mixed use, which raised some concerns within myself of potentially seeing commercial sprawl over the years up there. And I really wanted to make sure that we had a clear boundary of what we're looking for and that housing is the priority of the, the development for the purpose of, of this as well as the, the sustainable and ecological growth. So I've split the first designation and put, created 22 acres of recreational resort mixed-use land use designation. And that's shown in Exhibit B of the staff report. The dedication of the Knoll in 2014 is being utilized to validate the expansion of the commercial mixed-use area for the neighborhood. The Villages' master plan previously dedicated five acres of commercial area for the total. And therefore, adding 17 and a half acres to the commercial area, we are validating that by the dedication of open space for the Knoll. I split the area and removed some land from the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to ensure the limitations, as I spoke on. Where is it? I'm looking for the sentence that talks about my ratio. So the ratio that I calculated, based upon the 22 and a half acres and the 35 and some change acres that was dedicated in 2014. In the text of the proposal, you'll see that staff is requesting that if anybody were to ever desire to expand the recreational resort mixed-use land use designation, they must dedicate a ratio of one and a half acres of public open space for each acre of desired recreational resort land use that would be requested. So in the future, should, should this 22 and a half acres move forward for a Comprehensive Plan designation, if there was ever a Comp Plan Amendment request by a private property owner, they would need to be able to provide one and a half acres of open space. And.
That open space would be managed the way the Knoll would be managed, not open for development at all?
It would need to be dedicated.
Totally natural area.
Actually zoned and, and dedicated through the Comp Plan process as open space. Yes.
But it might, might not be contiguous with existing open space?
It, it may not be contiguous with existing open space, but that is something that the Commission can deliberate tonight, is if that's something that you would want, is that it just continues to expand where we have open space? And, or do we want to create new open space parks? Or create a native, natural passage trail for wildlife? Or how, how that should be considered in the future?
Okay, so, but if somebody decided that they wanted to expand the commercial area and dedicate one and a half times the acreage for open space, then who manages that open space?
It would be, in the, in the draft proposal language, in the attached ordinance, it requires deeding, deeding and dedication to the city.
So the city would need to take it on?
It would be a public benefit. And, and it would be then owned, owned and managed by the city to ensure its compliance.
Thank you.
So, moving forward, staff proposes limitations to the res, I propose limitations to the residential mixed structure land use designation, which included requiring large single-family lots on the perimeter adjacent to national wildlife properties as well as other open space areas. With structures adjacent to the recreational resort mixed use be limited to attached townhomes and multifamily higher-density development. The area between the two would be retained as medium-density units, such as duplexes, triplexes, four flats. There is a geographic depiction of this concept included in the proposed ordinance.
Can I make a comment? I'm sorry, can I make a comment? The with doesn't seem to go with anything there. Is it, there's a couple of places in here where with starts out a sentence that has no verb. Right in the middle of that paragraph.
Which, which one here?
The what, the bottom paragraph on page 17?
Staff includes.
The second one, the second line.
With, with structures adjacent to the recreational resort mixed use be limited to attached townhomes and multifamily structures. So it should have been a comma instead of a period.
I think there's several places in here where that occurred. Thank you.
In addition to the variety of housing types authorized under the residential mixed structure land use, the draft language includes a goal for 30% of the housing units to be accessible to the members of the community, earning 80 to 120% of the median family income. This is also something that I'd like the Planning Commission to consider, is, is that the right percentage ratio for our workforce housing? Do we want to open it up and request council consider broadening that a little more? Is 30% a require, a good amount of percentage for, for any, for that as well?
How would that be implemented? Like, for example, if the developer comes in with a housing development plan, would each of the developers be required to include a goal of 30% of their housing units being accessible to members of the community in that income bracket? Or, you know, how, is that how it would be implemented?
Well, there's a, there's some varieties. And one of the things that's associated with this Comp Plan Amendment is the allowance of development agreements as well to, to get through the implementation or meeting some of those standards. If it was one application that came in for, say, 100 units, generally, it would be that that, that developer knows that to get 70 market rate, they'd have to create 30 below-market or at workforce housing, you know, the 80% to 120 MFI. But that percentage of 30% was something that has been discussed in the past. It wasn't something that I've had the community conversation with in general. So it's also something that I'd like the Planning Commission to consider is, is that appropriate? Or is there a better way to make the language more specific to providing that the area needs to provide an amount? But maybe there is one developer that wants to provide all of that percentage of units, and the other ones want to do a different type of diverse housing style.
I would like to see it mixed in, frankly, but.
No, no. So the, oh, go ahead.
Okay, I have one other question. This 1.5 to 1 ratio, has that been run past the legal people as proportional? Under the Supreme Court's decision about proportionality?
Well, it would be an option. It would be a request. So you're requesting to get the designation. And so it would be it, in order to request it through the Comp Plan, if the policy states 1.5 is needed in open space.
Okay.
Because they don't have, it's not an obligation, they don't have to request the designation. Current proposed implementing districts for the residential mixed structure include the active R175. The city has an R110, and open space zoning districts. I propose language allowing for the development of future zoning districts to be established that are specific to the mixed structure land use, should city council desire changes in the future outside of a development agreement process. In closing, I've done my best to draft language of the ordinance that works to protect the neighborhood, the investments of the community to the region, ensure appropriate use of capital infrastructure without the development of sprawling neighborhoods, as well as implement the concepts and visions that have been worked through over the last year in an attempt to update the master plan. So with that, staff has provided some draft findings for the Planning Commission, and moving to Exhibit B of your materials shows the two designations, and they're...
87.
That is packet page 26. And then we also have, why did, yes, the draft ordinance starting on packet page 27. Starting on packet page 28 is where the descriptions and text for the comprehensive plan amendment are included. I will read the draft language for Lincoln City North Recreation Resort Mixed Use first. It is the intent of the Recreation Resort Mixed Use to retain the unique opportunity to establish a complete, enduring, and sustainable neighborhood that delivers a distinct strike of balance between nature and development, preserves the Knoll, Pacific Ocean views, and ecological biodiversity. The Recreation Resort Mixed Use designation is central to the surrounding mixed residential designation. Commercial, retail, and office space uses are limited to the center of the designation with special attention to separation of the higher-intensity uses with the use of roadways. To obtain the future land use map designation, a property owner must have made an associated dedication of undisturbed, pristine open space or critical natural areas deeded to Lincoln City for the benefit of all residents at a ratio of 1 and 1/2 acres of open space per 1 acre of Lincoln City North Resort Recreation. The area dedicated as LCNRR is currently limited to 22.5 acres based upon the dedication of 35.04 acres of open space consisting of the Knoll. Any expansion of this designation will require additional open space dedications. Roadways and street dedication shall honor the available view corridors, allow functional movement throughout the neighborhood, and must include amenities for pedestrian and non-motorized travel. Access to the district will be from northeast Devils Lake Boulevard, northeast Voyage Avenue, northeast Salacy Drive upon development, and North Clancy Road, as shown in the concept plans for future zoning district designations. It is a district where wetland streams and their corridors are preserved, improved, and dedicated as wetland wildlife corridors with conservation easement areas that allow passive recreation without disturbance of the sensitive ecologies. Buffers around the sensitive areas will be required to ensure the natural functions of the waterway, fish, and wildlife. Preservation of existing timber, shrubs, and ground cover will be prioritized in the future development as being, as reviewed. Lincoln City North Recreation Resort Mixed Use designation will be implemented through negotiated development agreements that complies with the intent of the district until a future zoning district is established. Would you like me to go through the residential mixed structure, or would you like to start with talking about the proposal and the area for Lincoln City North Recreation Resort, Chair?
I would like to start by talking about the area proposed.
Okay.
If you please. And I would love to see a map that shows me what those areas are that are being excluded, the A, A', B, C, and D.
Would you like me to show that as we talk about residential, or would you like that?
Um, no. Well, I, we're, I think that's a, I want to know why it's out, and I'd like to see where it is in relation to the map. And while you're at it, I'm curious about this map that was prepared that shows, it is packet page 26. It shows a funky little strip up in the northwest corner, and I'm curious about that. It doesn't appear to have any road connections.
Oh, only if that's a holly fire.
And I, and I'm curious about that particular location and why it's included.
It is part of the villages' master plan. It is dedicated as residential, and growth was assumed to occur there.
So it might have been helpful for us to have a map of the master plan to go along with this discussion.
That's what I'll be pulling up.
Great.
Oh.
And your ratio, is that how you arrived at the 22.5 acres? Because you're assuming that the already dedicated open space of 35 acres gives you the 1.5?
Staff, I analyzed the additional 58 acres that were dedicated back in 2011. However, since that had been dedicated as open space preserve area in some manner or form since the approval of the villages' Matt Cascade Head Master Plan in 1998, I did not feel that that was worthy dedication that was going above or beyond what the previous owners had to do.
Okay.
However, the Knoll...
Is this designation acknowledging the areas that the consultant identified that were areas that would be secondary to development due to the difficulty to build on them, the slope, et cetera, up there? Or is all of that included in this designation?
In regards to the Knoll dedication?
No, the other area. At one point, I'm, I recall a discussion with the consultant for the villages' master plan, and he identified, there were, there were a number of acres that had originally been identified for development, and then he pulled back on that area because there was an acknowledgement that there are several, several locations up there that were just not conducive to development. They were either steep slopes, highly erodible, et cetera. So I'm wondering if those lands are now folded into this designation for development.
Uh, it's the desktop on it to put...
Okay.
...sure that it's on, so I can have...
There it is. It's coming. Okay.
Is this the image that you were referring to?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Looks familiar.
So the Knoll, could you identify some landmarks on the map?
Yeah, so the Knoll is located right here. And let me open up another file really fast.
So that, that map that you just had up, that was the master planning map, right?
That was the original map sent to, oh, this one?
Yeah.
Right here?
Yeah.
This was the work that was done in 2018 to, to attempt to update the master plan.
Right. And I'm not seeing that little disconnected piece in that map.
Compared to the material, yes.
Compared to packet page 26.
And then can I ask also, is all the green, is that already dedicated open space?
No. So the land use designation, this, right now, when, when they dedicated the open space for the Knoll...
Yeah.
They excluded keeping this 7.85 acres out. It is currently zoned R175.
How's that accessed?
Through the Knoll, I guess.
No, I don't think so.
Um, let me pull up GIS really fast here. Where is it? You mean vehicular access or pedestrian access?
Well, if, if you're talking about developing it with homes, I would assume vehicular access would be necessary, but I'm not seeing any connection of that to the villages, and I'm trying to understand, it's very steep, it's very erodible, and this map honestly is the first time I've seen it stuck anywhere, so I'm just curious what it is.
So it is right here. It would, roadways would need to be developed to access it, likely off of Neptune, if even feasible.
I, no. Well, I mean, it would, it would be an extraordinary road to go from Neptune to that location.
The, I believe that the villages' master plan had it coming off of Port.
So then it would go through the Knoll?
It would go right here.
Right, that's the Knoll.
No, the Knoll is green. Well, I should say the designation of the open space is the green area here.
So what is the area that's showing the, that right there? Stop that right there.
That has no zoning. It is owned by a local property owner.
Is that the former quarry?
Possibly, looking at the ownership.
If it has no zoning, it just means it's outside the city.
What?
It's outside the city, if it, if it's not showing any zoning color.
Okay. So then access to that little yellow piece up there, through that, could be problematic because it's privately owned and outside the city.
Developers are able to get easements all the time. I've, I've seen a lot of opportunity, but if the Planning Commission is, ask, ask where you're, I'd like to ask where you're going with this.
Let me, let me tell you where I'm going with this. The Knoll is significant wildlife habitat, and I don't want to see it isolated as an island, where the wildlife coming up from the Salmon River and across that whole stretch of wild land is blocked by development. So I, I, my preference would be for that little yellow piece to be taken out of this because I don't think it relates to the villages. I think it's problematic if you're thinking of running roads from Neptune up to that. That's a, an extremely steep slope. So I, that little piece, if I had my choice, that would come out.
A concern for me also, it is problematic to reach that area. There might be pressure to build a road through the open space, and I don't think any of us would want to see that, so I think it should be excluded also, yeah.
So would you exclude it from the residential, or would you request that it be part of the land use map amendment, but ask that it, recommend that it be zoned something open space?
Open space. I would.
Is the city already in possession of that piece of land?
What was your question?
Is the city already in possession of that piece of land? Do we own that land?
Yes.
Okay.
So now can we see the, the A block, B block, C block? I feel like I'm talking about a pediatricary.
So this is the map that was provided for you in your packet today.
Right.
As you can see, it ends here right at the Voyage intersection. The A, A block, A', B, C, and D blocks include all of the development that is located south of that intersection, that was designated in this concept map as medium-density residential. And some of this has been developed already, some is underdeveloped and has lots of, lots of room for growth still. It would be compatible to add that area back into the consideration, and again, I would strongly recommend it be limited to the mixed residential structure.
So help us understand your thinking in leaving it out.
The reason I left it out was in thinking about the development and the opportunities for growth, the, the villages' master plan does still provide opportunity for property owners that are, may not be the city, to be developed underneath, through the approvals that were provided there. So there wouldn't be any loss of rights or development for those property owners in that region, should they want to request either an extension of the master plan to finish their blocks or phases, or if they wanted to come through with a designation requesting residential mixed structure. So it really was, I didn't want to make the call for private property owners that may or may not know which direction they want to go right now.
But this is sort of an overlay, right? I mean, they, if, if we, if we included that in the mixed use, it would be consistent with, with what's there now, right? Which, what has been developed there?
It would be consistent with what was approved for the villages' master plan. It would not be consistent with the concept plan that this is. Would, I would hope that, I wasn't here when this was being worked on to know if the consultants truly took into consideration everything that is there now when they were drawing this concept.
I'm, I'm just thinking that if we're, if we're trying to clean up land use designation, it doesn't make sense to leave chunks out.
Okay. So this is, this blocks A, A', B, C, and D are currently designated...
Are those all the ones south of that dark cinnamon color?
Yeah.
That, all of those?
So the blocks are...
That's A, A', B, C, and D?
That's all five of the blocks I'm referencing, yeah.
Okay.
Including this leg over here, or appendage. I don't know what kind of appendage it is.
I don't either. Well...
And so the current land use designation and zoning for these areas is our residential single-family R175. So changing the land use designation to mixed residential would not affect their zoning area?
Wouldn't affect, right.
Yeah. And so I can support the Planning Commission.
My preference would be to include it, just for consistency. I mean, if we're trying to clean the map up, I'd rather not see exclusions.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Did I just hear you say that the A and A through D has the designation we're currently talking about tonight, or has something that's equivalent to it?
The zoning designation is R175. The land use is residential low, so we would be proposing a change to, should the commission follow Chair's recommendation or suggestion, we would be changing the land use designation, but the zoning district would remain the same.
Okay. So that means that the people who are currently developing in there would see a change in what their land was now able to support.
Through the land use designation, correct. And so they would then be able to utilize a development agreement as long as it complied with the policies of the comprehensive plan for that residential mixed structure designation, but I haven't read that yet, so I thought we were talking commercial.
Oh, okay. No, well, the concern that I would have is that if we're going to make a significant change to existing property owners outside of ourselves, then I think this whole thing becomes more problematical.
Correct. Now, the zoning regulations and development opportunities for those blocks would remain the same either through the master plan, which is valid until January 31st, 2023, or through the existing zoning code of R175.
Sorry, maybe it's because I'm new here. R175 is equivalent to this, what you're talking about, this Lincoln City?
No, the Lincoln City is the comprehensive plan designation. So the goals and policies for the future growth of the area would be the overarching. And the implementing zoning district right now in current policy is R175. We're not proposing changing zoning through any of this process at this time. We're just talking comprehensive plan land use designations.
I think you and I are going to have to have a meeting. Okay, thank you.
Other questions, commissioners, on this part? Anyone?
Where did the term recreational resort come from?
We have a recreation commercials zone and the vision and the draft language out of the work that was done by our consulting teams. Those didn't, I considered taking that for our zoning standards and then establishing a new land use designation. However, that recreational commercial zone is, is throughout the town, throughout the city in other areas. And so we did want to create a new commercial area, commercial designation. Again, I'm open for name changes. I'm not-
Yeah, I'm just curious. So we don't have any recreational resort designation anywhere else in the city?
Correct.
This would be new up here. So what makes it different? What makes it necessary to have a different one up here?
If you would like, I can read you the, the few sentences that implement the recreation commercial in our comprehensive plan. And then you could compare the language I read of that to, to this.
Well, you could do that.
Because it, it focuses on a balance of, like, I guess, an ecotourism, you know, trying to bring, bring a dense commercial area where there is something that is of, you know, ecological preservation. And so when I say recreation, not in these, stay at a hotel and recreate with a bottle of wine and sit at the ocean, but recreation is an active recreation was the intent of, of my purpose in putting it up there.
If I remember correctly, I think when the designer of that plan spoke before the planning commission, he was referring perhaps to that kind of development. Hills that are too steep to be developed for residential use, for example. So there might be a camp in there that could be used for high tree activities or tents or, if I remember correctly, I'm not sure I do. I remember him talking about something like that.
Madam Chair?
Yes ma'am.
I think maybe Kate's having the same problem I am. This sounds distinctly like zoning, but like Kate, I don't, I've never seen an R zoning before. And I don't, if you, if you do this land use thing that makes something R, what does it say about what you can build in there?
Chair, would you like me to read the recreation resort designation? Thank you. So in the ordinance, starting on, I'm sorry, I'm going to read the residential mixed structure designation. And this is again for the comprehensive plan, which will guide the next 20 years. The current zoning will stay the same. Land use and zoning are different, have, have different intents and all, have different intent.
Think, think the difference between long range planning and short range planning. So this zoning, or this designation that you're talking about is the long range vision under which are the, the separate zoning ordinances.
But are there separate zoning, underlying zoning ordinances support what you're talking about here? Is this new?
The R1, the R17, we've drafted the land use designation to maintain and continue with the R175 currently until there's directive from council to my department to establish new zones.
So zoning's not going to change. They'll be able to build what they currently can build in this area. It's just putting an umbrella-
Yeah.
On the top. That's for long-term planning purposes. You, you, you missed the workshop we had where this was drilled into our heads.
Okay, okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
About the commercial designated area. I, I understand, I really like the idea of keeping it all centralized, especially in like the residential area. Are there any, have there been any thoughts or ideas about the types of businesses that would be really suited for the, the intent here? And any way to like encourage or incentivize those? You know, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking out in Rhodes End, the types of businesses that are close by or reducing traffic to 101, like basic needs and, and beach stuff, hiking things, stuff like that, that, to encourage those types of businesses that really make it kind of a self-sustainable community for people to live in or vacation in?
Uses are definitely something that the planning commission could consider in, in creating some kind of a frame for it. We've listed it as mixed. That would allow a variety, in our commercial zones, like in our general commercial zones, we allow anywhere from hotels, motels, all the way to auto-centric auto body shops. I did not want to go that broad of a spectrum on this. But I definitely think that the uses are something that the planning commission could consider. I would recommend limiting, you know, drive-throughs, auto or demand uses because of the development style that the concept is really garners to the, the pedestrian ability. I don't think that's a real word, but I just made it up. Of, of the region, yeah, yeah.
So is that your intent in the description of recreation resort to help guide the type of development that would be, that, that would be encouraged there?
Yes.
So-
But, and specifically allowing the use of negotiated development agreements with the city council really will make sure that as the, as the tides change with either housing or economy or the environment, that if, if they were, were to request a potential developer to utilize a development agreement, you could negotiate more than the, you know, nexus that Lenny was speaking about earlier that you can, are limited to in requiring with specific zoning districts. But I think that uses and additional language or additional descriptors for the area in that draft language, starting on page 20, packet page 28, going to package page 29, is completely acceptable, this part of the deliberation and, and consideration of, of making or, or not making a recommendation.
Okay. You know, I, when you were writing this language, did you have the visioning document nearby?
I actually had the PowerPoints and presentations from the consultants that presented the concept.
Okay, because I, I think there was a very strong feeling, both during the workshops with the consultant and also through the visioning process, that this particular area is, is special in Lincoln City in that it has the big trees. It has the elk herd. I mean, it has the ecological and environmental benefits that we don't want to see bulldozed for the sake of, of housing development that you see anywhere else. And I think the visioning group was very clear in their desire to maintain the trees and to maintain the view sheds and to, to develop this in an ecologically sensitive way. So I know you have some language in this description that, that lends itself to that. And I'm, I'm just hoping that that's the direction that we're going.
One thing that I've seen in past jurisdictions I've worked for is within the comprehensive plan, there is actually a, a percentage of retention for, for that types of, like landscaping. A developer must preserve at least 20% of all native vegetation or something like that. So that is a common practice.
Okay, all right. Okay, so I think adding those sections back in, does the rest of the commission agree that that's something we should do, that we should include those sections?
And adding that one parcel to open space?
Yeah.
That's city-owned, correct?
So I, I don't know how you want to, want to go forward, Lindsay. I mean, I have comments on cer, on many of the pages in here, so should we just?
Yeah, just start going at it. I'd, I'd say let's take the comments for the commercial area first.
Okay.
Because I haven't had the opportunity to read out loud the, the residential mixed structure out of the ordinance.
And what page is that on, packet?
Starting on packet page 28.
Okay, because I have some comments before that.
Okay, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Then I'm going to ask that this paragraph that starts on line 16 on page 29 be re, I love the idea, but I don't think what this says makes, is clear about what it means.
Which, which thing is?
Okay, line 16, page 29.
Line 16, all right.
A district where wetlands are preserved, but that, that, there's something missing there. That this is a district where wetlands are preserved?
The north, Lincoln City North Recreation Resort Mixed Use District.
Is a district?
If, if city council passes.
Well, no, I don't, but I understand they have the final say in everything. But that, is that what that means? A district where? Because it doesn't have a verb in it again.
That's the intent, yes.
Okay, maybe it could be opened up a little bit. I will tell you, since I was here when we did villages at Cascade Head, the intent of the, of that plan at the time was to preserve those areas of streamside and special trees and things because there are, there are species in there that are very limited in Oregon, like the Pacific, whoops, red salamander, et cetera, et cetera. So that the developed, the homeowners wouldn't be able to go in there and put grass right down to the stream. That was the intent there, was to preserve those areas that would be used for buffer. Now, I see the language buffer here, and I'm certainly in favor of that language. But that was what the intent was at the time, is that all those corridors along the streambeds and things like that be preserved.
And that's the intent for writing it into this comprehensive plan as we discuss that future zoning still needs to be established, whether that buffer is 50 feet or 100 feet or 25 feet. That, those specifics will still be developed as we go through our zoning code amendments to implement this.
Okay, I'm going to back up. Page 21.
Page 20.
21, packet page 21. At the top, there is a goal statement. It is the aesthetic goal. And then the sentence underneath it needs some work. Proposed ordinance does not itself alter the aesthetic character of the areas it would established the new comp plan designations. So fix that, please. Number nine, it simply says this goal is satisfied, and it doesn't explain how the transportation goal is satisfied. So you might want to add something in there.
These are draft findings, too.
Right, right, but I, I mean, you might as well catch them-
Right.
Now. Under number 11, overall environmental goal, I think I know what you meant to say, but I think it says the opposite. I'm on page 21, overall environmental goal number 11. Can you see that? Make it bigger. It says, "The city intends to adopt implementing zoning districts upon the completion of the current amendment that will meet or exceed the city's current development standards and impacts to environmental critical areas." I don't think you mean to exceed the city's impacts-
Preservation of-
To envi, yeah, so you, you're missing something in there. Number 12, is this area within the coastal shoreline?
Everything west of the highway 101, I think is in the coastal shoreline.
Is this, as it curves, that takes out, takes in a large swath as 101 curves?
Well, that's true.
So I'm just asking for clarification of that.
Yeah, it's, I do not believe that's within our coastal shoreline. Kate? Do we have? Do we have?
Do you, yeah.
Do you know which one I need to expand in GIS for the?
17?
There are some lands, there's historic landslides there, but I do not believe that it is in the coastal shoreline, city's coastal shorelands due to the topography change that happens up here at Port.
What I was curious about, if there's an elevational control of that.
Yeah.
Because just saying west of 101 is 101 curves there, that would incorporate a huge-
I can read to you from the comp plan where it talks about what, what are designated as coastal shorelands.
Well, on page 24, the first line under coastal shorelands, "The city's coastal shorelands include all land west of Highway 101."
Where are you reading from?
I'm reading on page 24, well, actually 25, start at goal 17 coastal shoreline.
Right. In the comprehensive plan, it, it does say, "All land within the 100-year floodplain within 50 feet of streams, creeks, rivers, marshes, 200 feet of the shoreline of Devil's Lake, 200 feet east and west of Devil's Lake, of East Devil's Lake Road, or between the ocean and the First Street east of the ocean high water line, including Seletz Bay shall be designated as coastal shorelands."
Okay, well, I'm not sure there's a geographic justification for calling this coastal shoreline, but you can look.
I'll, I'll look into that.
I mean, it could be an administrative identification. Okay, goal, let's see, moving on to there's a, there's a curious, on page 23, under goal nine, economic development. It talks about four lots. What four lots are those? It says, "As noted in the findings related to the city's economic goal."
This is a, a bad copy paste.
Okay. Okay.
I'll get that.
And then, goal 16 says, "The area proposed for rezoning while close to a designated estuarine area, Seletz Bay..."
Yeah, again, same issue. I might need to look at all of those goals, actually.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Okay, we talked about that one, talked about that one. Okay, any other comments, questions on this?
I think one of the recommendations you may want to make is simply the name, Northern Lincoln City. To me, and a lot of the residents of Lincoln City, anything north of Dee River is North Lincoln City, so I think you need to be more precise, yeah.
The north-nol?
Huh? Northernmost.
Macoma Woods. Yeah, I, yeah, I think the name is a little bit confusing, but the villages at Cascade Heads is the most confusing of all, so, since it isn't. So, is the Planning Commission ready to make a call on this?
Well, is there any other conversation on the commercial before I go to residential?
Right, okay. Anything else on commercial, other than, I think Marcy's point is well-taken. It would be nice to be able to be very directive on the types of development that would be encouraging of pedestrian and self-sufficiency for the area, you know, without...
It'd be nice, if you're living there, to be able to walk to a store to buy vegetables or a couple of restaurants to eat a meal out, or to provide basic amenities so you don't have to get in your car and drive.
Down 101.
Kind of convenience store of some type.
Is it a Walmart?
No.
Okay. You could, if the Commission desires to add that to the motion, staff can work on drafting some language for those uses.
Yeah, and, you know, there are, there are cities who have codes that encourage non-car type of developments. For example, they limit the size of supermarkets and grocery stores to create more of them in a walkable distance or a biking distance, rather than having enormous boxes.
With a large reach, yeah.
Right. You know, dissuading drive-throughs would be lovely, to keep people out of cars. So, I think, and that, if that can fold into what a recreation resort development is like, where, you know, people can go there and kind of get away from the automobile, and I think that would be great, if we can figure out a way to word things that way.
Okay, okay.
Bike paths. You know, pedestrian squares, I think that was another big suggestion in the visioning process. So, other comments on the commercial aspect? Okay.
Okay, I will begin reading on line 29, packet, page 29, for the residential mixed structure, Lincoln City North. Permanent long-term housing is the primary use of the Lincoln City North Residential Mixed Structure designation stemming from the high-use, a really long acronym, center, the Commercial Mixed Use Center. The residential mixed structure designation will provide compact, high-density, medium-density, and low-density residential uses that provide balanced housing opportunities for all levels of income. An area that provides a minimum of 30% of the housing units to be affordable and accessible to residents making 80 to 120% of the median family income for Lincoln City. Uses in this designation are limited to residential with live-work-use allowance for the high-end, medium-density areas, allowing a maximum of 20% of the residential structure to be utilized as workspace while ensuring protection of the remaining 80% as residential space. Roadways and street dedication shall honor the available view corridors, allow functional movement throughout the designation, and include amenities for pedestrian and non-motorized travel. Access to the district will be from northeast Devil's Lake Boulevard, northeast Voyage Avenue, northeast Salassee Drive, and North Clancy Road are shown in Concept Plan Figure 1. Figure 1 also shows the specific locations and boundaries of the future zoning designations to implement the residential development. A district where wetland streams and corridors are preserved, and this is a duplicate of the same language that was in the first version. Were preserved, improved, and dedicated as wetland wildlife corridors with conservation easement areas that allow passive recreation without disturbance of the sensitive ecologies. Buffers around the sensitive areas will be required to ensure the natural function of the waterways, fish, and wildlife. Preservation of existing timber, shrubs, and ground cover will be prioritized in future development. The residential mixed structure designation will be implemented by the city's residential low, R175, and R10 zoning districts, and open space zoning districts in the interim, or through negotiated development agreements that comply with the intent of the district until futures, zoning districts are established. I see a typo right here. And that concludes. So, in the last sentence I read, I used the term "district" twice. The first one should be designation, with the intent of the designation until future zoning districts are established.
So, as far as the 30% of the housing units that would be affordable, what's the percentage currently in the city of affordable housing?
You know, I would have known that off the top of my head early last week. We have, well, it really depends. There is no defined definition of affordable currently, so we don't know if affordable is what's affordable to the wages that are earned in Lincoln City, or if affordable means what is affordable to those that live in Lincoln City. And so, that's been an ongoing conversation, I believe, that council has been having with administration in conversations about needing for new housing. What is the term "affordable"? I don't have a solution for you tonight on that.
Okay, so, but it's possible that it could be based on the wages in the city, as opposed to some statewide average, or...
Correct. So, we do break down, every county, as well as the cities, break down the median family income on an annual basis for those. One thing that would, you know, that median family income can change consistently, which is why I didn't put hard numbers in the draft language for what was like 2019 or 2018 standards. I believe right now, it's about $42,000 for a family of two in Lincoln City, but I would have to double-check the housing needs analysis on that.
About $37,898. But, there's an interesting thing about median family income in Lincoln City. I just know this from market research for my business, is that 80% of local people that live here are actually under the poverty line. So, for the median to be around $40,000, which it is, that means that the 20% who are making over that are making, have so much more than that, that it's bringing that median up. So, it's important to remember that even if people are making $36,000 a year, if affordability in rent is based off of a third of your disposable income, that's going to be around $900 a month for, you know, a family. And I would say that would be, that would be definitely two incomes in our thing. So, actually, I had a question about the 30% of, is that going to be designated to the three different zones of which ones? So, are there going to be any single-family homes that are going to be affordable, or is it all going to land in that multifamily or the duplexes and triplex zone? Because there is a big need for homes, even just single homes, even if they're small homes or very small lot sizes. It's a big need for people that, there are apartments available, there's practically no houses.
I really like that comment, and I really think the percentage should be spread throughout those different zones.
I agree, it should be in each zone.
Yeah, I do, too. You know, here's a concern I have with calling this recreational resort. Sounds like hotels, hotels, vacation rentals. And I'm not sure that that's necessarily what the city needs. If we're talking about sustainability and neighborhoods, I think there's plenty of research out there that suggests that some of those short-term rental opportunities have a negative impact on neighborhoods. So, I'm a little concerned about that.
If I may ask, you brought up, so are you concerned of the hotels, motels, and vacation rentals in the commercial component, the 22 acres? Or were you thinking that it would be in the residential mixed structure?
Yes.
Okay. So, my intent in drafting was that, I tried to address that concern, because I foresaw that. And in the first sentence, I put, "Permanent long-term housing is the primary use." I did not say what uses were not, but going for the positive intent of the aspect of the district, I guess. There is, I mean, there is the wide opportunity for the Planning Commission to specifically state that, you know, the hotels, motels, vacation rentals, this is not the right area for it. I may have not, I may not have been strong enough in my language of my intent.
Yeah. Well, it seems to be, it seems to be somewhat contradictory if we're talking about a recreational resort area, but we're not going to have any rooms for rent up there. I don't want to see another VRD neighborhood.
Right, right.
I guess that's the bottom line for this area.
The intent is, if there was to be, if there was to be a development for hotels or motels, they would have to go inside that 22 acres.
In the commercial district.
That is a commercial use, yeah.
Okay, and then what would be the, I mean, you know, we have now VRD regulations for other areas of the city. What would be the VRD regulations applicable to this area?
Well, they're not allowed, they're only allowed accessory use under the current R175 designation that they have. The Commission could make a recommendation to continue with that, or request when the council directs staff to draft a zoning code that it is restricted, and that it is not an allowed use.
So, is this going to become a zoning code like the R1RE? It'll be an R175RR, or...
Oh, no, I imagine drafting actual, like, it wouldn't, the only, there's medium-density, high-density, and low-density under the proposal. So, the R175 and R110 would potentially work for the rural areas out here, but I think we would need to go with a higher general density for some of these bigger, the cinnamon colors, as you put them.
Mm-hmm. Okay, is, are VRDs currently allowed in that area? Some of those areas are already developed.
Some of those areas are already developed. Our existing zoning standards allow an accessory license for up to 30 nights a year, and that's it.
But not, okay.
Under the R175, which is their current zoning. Now, there may be some that got a conditional use permit 20 years ago or something that I'm unaware of, but...
I mean, I think if we're going to encourage the development of a neighborhood that is sort of walkable-friendly, and you minimize the use of your cars, perhaps we should put a limit on the number of hotels, or motels, or lodges that can be built in this area to ensure that we're not getting a lot of traffic in and out because of them. And, you know, I think the goal here is to sort of develop a different kind of neighborhood for Lincoln City that's more focused on the permanent resident, or second-family homes, you know, that appreciate the natural environment, the hills and the trails, and, you know, bird viewing that's available in the area, yeah.
Right. Plus, opportunities for folks who currently are in the city that may want more of a retirement area up there. You know, I think that was another thing that was talked about in this master plan development, was developing areas where people that want to stay in Lincoln City can stay in Lincoln City. It's a place for them.
Quieter area off of 101.
Yeah, yeah.
Madam Chair. Forgive me if I was confused about this, but are we talking about two different zonings? First, there's this interior, central thing that's called recreational resort mixed use. And that's where we would have things possibly like motels, maybe not.
Or any commercial use.
Or any commercial. But I don't see anything in the next thing that's residential mixed structure that would encourage the use of, that would allow the use, the development of motels and hotels.
It currently is written for the use, primary use of permanent long-term housing.
The VRD thing is not listed in here one way or the other. Well, actually, there's something in there, about 30 days, somewhere in here.
The 30%, but, correct. So, we're doing two land use designations, one being the 22 and 1/2 acres of commercial, and then the remaining area in this map as the residential mixed structure designation.
And the remaining area is about, what, 200 acres, or around to 150?
I'd have to go back to my staff report, but it's a few hundred.
Yeah, it's a few hundred acres, okay. So, that's quite a bit of housing.
I have a question. So, on page 30, second, the first full paragraph, the first sentence, "Roadways and street dedication shall honor the available view corridors." How do we enforce that? How would that be implemented?
Well, so, the development of our concept plan, and the reason that the concept plan map, this map that I have in here is also in the attachment of the ordinance. It needs to be expanded to show the other blocks. However, that's where we would, and how we would establish that. There was a lot of thought and energy in the design and preparation of design for the roadways to, that they, as you travel down them, if you can maintain or manage an eye on the road with the ocean and the periphery, you'd be creating a benefit and an enjoyment for that purpose. So, the future development is requesting that while these roads may not be the strict alignment based upon topography or what is available there, because we didn't get into the detailed analysis with this concept, as the development comes in, we would have the strength, and the Planning Commission would have the strength to approve or deny based upon the language of, well, your road could actually preserve views better if you moved this house over and put the road there, or something like that.
I was wondering also if there, if, and perhaps there is language that addresses this in the ordinance, proposed ordinance, but the need to respect the existing topography, because there are developments, recent developments in Lincoln City that really not respected the existing topography, and have built in areas that probably, you know, have removed hillsides, yeah. And I would like to see the natural topography in this area preserved, and that means preserving the forests as much as we can, and the natural topography, instead of just going in there and bulldozing it all out.
Correct. And one thing that we would also see is topography going up, hills being added to property to potentially increase views or something because of the way that height is measured. So, the topography was important for me to make sure that if we're preserving the ecological functions of the site, the topography is included in that.
I'm curious about in areas where the topography has been really disrupted, what impact is that going to have on the water table or storm drainage, you know? So, we'll see that, yeah.
Other comments? Concerns?
I have a question for you. Would you like us to, would it make sense to move this forward tonight with specific recommendations? Or would it make more sense perhaps for staff to take our comments and maybe take another look at this and work on some of the wording?
It's up to you, the Commission. Either way, that works for me. We do have, the notice was originally presented that the public hearing would be in front of City Council on September 23rd. However, recognizing the delays that we had in our own timeframe, turning this around to, to try to get on City Council, I'd have to either go without a formal recommendation or request Patty come sign something tomorrow after I do a bunch of scrambles and edits. So, it's up, our next meeting will be on September 17th. I can make the final tune, fine-tune edits to the ordinance, update the images, work on some draft language to focus on the interdispersment of the affordable requirement as well as maybe taking a stab at some of the uses for the commercial area, as well as maybe some landscape preservation of, maybe, maybe there's an incentive that you get, you preserve some trees.
Is there some way to incentivize the protection of some of the mature existing timber that's there instead of a developer coming in and clearing the lot and then replanting with little sticks?
Non-native?
Yeah, yeah, maple. So, so is that gonna, can we, can we see this again at our next meeting and provide the recommendation to Council at that meeting? Or does that screw up the?
Would, would you like staff to draft a recommendation for you to come back at the 17th as well as the, the language?
I would.
Yeah.
I, I think that would be great if you could do that. Just incorporate everything you've heard.
And then maybe we'll be able to-
And then-
Sign it and meet.
Yeah, yeah. That would be good. Our map wizard just walked in.
Okay.
Okay, so, we're, we're going to continue this to next. Do we need a motion to do that? We do. Okay, can I have a motion from someone?
I so moved.
I so second.
Okay, the, the motion is to continue this to our next meeting.
Would you like to keep the public hearing open or close the public hearing?
I would like to keep it open.
Okay.
That would be fine with me.
Move to keep the public hearing open and continue deliberations to September 17th.
A motion?
I'll move to keep the public hearing open to the September 17th meeting.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Don't we have two motions on the floor at the same time?
We have one to keep the public hearing open and now we're going to move to, we had a so moved, that was your motion, I believe.
Did we vote on that one?
And we had a second on that one?
Yeah.
So, do we, do we, all in favor of moving this to our next meeting for continued deliberation?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. You have some homework to do, Lindsay.
I have homework to do.
All right. And is it still the intent that the Council will hold a public hearing on this matter on the 23rd?
It is possible, however, I would, I need to talk with, with the Council leadership on that.
Okay. Okay.
I'm gonna move back to my end.
Okay. Old business, we had a work-study sign code update. Can we take a five-minute break? We can. Do it. Five minutes.
Time to eat cake in five minutes?
Do it right.
Well, I'll go over that. Yeah, yeah. Pictures, yeah. I did look at that, there was, um, well, yeah, we'll go. What's that? Do I keep my calendar, like my, my own office calendar?
Yes.
I have my Outlook available. Electronically, I have it.
Okay, why wouldn't you?
See if- Oh, okay. Let me see. Okay. Let me, let me call you in the morning because I think an email with all of the materials that they've had for the last six months might be really helpful on why I comprehensively. Okay, I have a 9:00. Come on, Josh. We're waiting for you.
Okay. Planning Commission is back in session. Old business, work-study, the sign code update.
Yeah, so, this is wrapping up, or wrapping around back to the Planning Commission. On August 15th, we had a sign workshop that was focused on the findings of the July signed survey results. I wanted to be able to provide all of the information and the input and feedback that we've received for the sign code, specifically for your, your reference referral and those commissioners that were able to make the meeting, if you wanted to speak to kind of what you heard and some of the ideas. But also wanted to get some ideas about the opportunity for us to have a joint work-study session with the City Council before a Planning Commission recommendation is completed. And so, I wanted to look at calendars and potentially identify a few dates that I could share with the city manager to see if our council would be amendable to a, a work-study.
Okay.
So, with that, if you, I know both Steve and Chair Crone were attending the sign workshop. We also had Miles there. Trying to think, and maybe a commissioner that's-
She was there.
Oh, and Marie, who's, who's unable to attend today.
Right.
So, it was a good, I, I enjoyed the meeting. We, starting on page, packet page 115 is a summary of all of the handwritten notes that we received from the sign workshop. And most of those summaries focus on illumination, permanent signage allowances, general comments, and then what to do about, uh, abandon, excuse me, abandoned and dilapidated signs. And so, our great Kate organized and typed up all of the feedback that we got from that. So, with that, I don't wanna present what you can read necessarily unless you really want me to. Otherwise, we just have a conversation.
So, I know we're, we're going to be trying to establish another public workshop, correct?
I envisioned an open house in advance and, in advance of a public hearing.
Okay.
More so of an opportunity to educate on how we got to the draft before we, before we take testimony.
Right. You know, it's always difficult to, to assess whether you've reached the public in any sort of public workshop or open house. My, my sense at that, at the recent one for which you've provided the input was that it was, at least in the group that I was, the little subgroup I was with, was all business owners. And I, I'm, I, I don't wanna discount the people who are directly affected by any sort of sign ordinance, which are business owners. But I'm wondering if you have any ideas of how we might engage others in the community that have opinions that aren't necessarily reflected in this?
Yeah, you know, we did have a good turnout of residents within the city that were not business owners on the signed survey. There's a lot of detailed information in the, in the survey results.
So, that was 100 and how many people?
We had a total of 140.
Okay, and there's, and there's 8,000, how many in the city?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I, I know, I'm-
Doorbell.
And again, it's, this isn't a criticism, it's, it's a conundrum to, to get folks that will complain to their neighbors or complain as they walk down the street to actually participate and come in and provide some constructive direction or desires rather than just complain or, you know what I'm saying? So, I'm just, I, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there that I don't know how we would do it, but it would be, it would be great if we could get more participation from a broader spectrum of people in the community.
Do you have any, any thoughts or suggestions on that? For, for instance, this is, this is what we have done. The workshop was published twice in the newspaper.
Right.
It was on both the Facebook pages of, that the city has.
Yeah.
And I, I asked-
I know, it's, it's hard to get people, I mean, you can-
So, I have an idea.
I, I actually have one too. What's yours, Lindsay?
We could pick it.
What kind of signs can we use?
We can use whatever signs. You can't read the sign to determine if it's legal or not.
Right. I'll, I'll tell you, and this may sound really weird, but during the visioning process, we held lots of little individual group discussions. And I attended and participated in several of them, approaching folks at various things like the Chowder Fest and the, I don't know, whatever, the community thing, Community Day. And the best input that I got was at the high school. And so, I, I would like to see more involvement by the young people in this community who live here and have opinions and, and, you know, they're sometimes more forward-thinking. So, if we can wrap that in somehow to get, you know, I don't know.
We can contact a local civic teacher and see if there's-
To get, I mean, there was a leadership group, I think, that was at the high school. And they were articulate and they had great ideas and they had clear understanding of what a visioning process was. So, I think it'd be worthwhile to at least try to, to get some input from, from them. And there are also community, you know, there are several neighborhood associations. I don't know if they've been approached to get feedback from the neighborhood associations as well that are not chamber associations, but more the people who live in the community?
I know one was and they were not interested in providing any feedback.
Okay.
But yeah, I think there's, I know of the, the Nell Scott and then the Rhodes End. I have not heard of organized neighborhoods beyond those two. And I would wanna make sure that we reach especially the, the neighbors behind Ocean Lake or, you know, some of, some of those other. With the weather still nice, there's an opportunity to do pop-up shop and go utilize some of our neighborhood parks or neighborhood sitting areas with, with some white pads and look at the businesses that are right there and, you know, kind of do it like on, on the street engagement.
I, I thought about that because my business is in Ocean Lake and I, I thought, you know, you get locals and tourists all through there in that downtown area and I thought, gosh, it'd be so easy for me if I had a little survey that, you know, just check at the top whether you're visiting or not, whether you're kids or not, what you're from Lincoln City for. And then, you know, what, what do you notice when you drive through town?
Exactly.
What, what catches your eye? What are you aware of, of things that we offer? So, we can kind of see what the perception is.
Especially when they're right there. I mean, you, you go online and take a survey and it's a little different than if you're actually standing on the street. Exactly.
Yeah, and I thought about that, you know, and if, if we were able to come up with a simple survey, you wouldn't, it wouldn't take that many businesses that are willing to just hand it out and, and hand it back in, you know?
It's a good idea.
Then it's right in front of people, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Simple.
Make it simple.
I thought some of the responses to the questionnaire were very, were very good. And I got a lot of, there were some very good ideas expressed there in terms of providing incentives or, but, yeah, so, but maybe, I got, I got a lot of data out of that. It was helpful, yeah. One thing that came to my mind is perhaps we should, could provide some more background on, there was a big call for consistency throughout the city in terms of regulations, but there's also, I would like some background on why some of the Pearls have their own very, you know, way of doing. know, way of doing signs and why there is variation that currently exists. And, you know, what we would lose if we went to thoroughly, you know, making it consistent from one end of Lincoln City to the other.
Okay, background, background on why some pearls are buried, others not.
Why do they evolve with different
The pros and cons analysis, so get into the meat in detail of the analysis, okay?
I couldn't tell you part of it because I was there when we did the, some of the pearls. Like Taft, there was some discussion on doing, limiting the kind of signs because there wasn't a lot there already and because that neighborhood was, was expected or was considered to be one that could be developed as a touristy, nice area. And that's why some of the sign ordinance is different there.
Yeah, we can look into some, some of the background, the minutes, the, from the meetings as well as the notes from those ordinance amendments.
Well, and it dovetails, I mean, it was one of the reasons why I think early on when we were talking about pre-Lindsay, when we did the, when we had a sign ordinance placed in front of us. And it was separated from the design standards and it didn't seem quite logical to talk about the designs of commercial buildings and exclude the signage of those buildings. So I'm still sort of confused why we're talking about them separately. And case in point, I mean, there are existing design standards for the pearls too, for separate pearls. So, and I think a lot of people feel that they should be, we should have a consistency through the city. It's one city. Yes, there historically, they were pearls, but, you know, there needs to be some consistency in the design standards, so why wouldn't you have consistency in the signage as well? So I'm still a little confused why the signs are being talked about separate from the design standards. Because like I said, it seems that you're designing a building, the signage is integral to how the building is designed.
Actually, I know the answer to that story too. The design standards came about short, well, not shortly, but somewhat after the last attempt to do the sign ordinance, which resulted in chaos and confusion and nobody wanted to touch it again. So what they did was when they did the pearls, they added some of the design standards had signage in them too, but they didn't try to do it for the whole city at one time.
Well, we're currently considering design standards citywide. So it seems that it's appropriate to fold them together. I mean, if the goal is to have a cohesive, recognizable character to Lincoln City, even if it has some subtle variations pearl-to-pearl, the signs are the obvious connectivity between the different districts.
But then you get into the kind of, at the north end of town, we have a lot of pole, big billboard-type pole signs. And if you're going to allow that, then you want those also in Taft where they don't currently exist much. I mean, that's the kind of thinking that went into
Right, I understand the historic perspective. I'm suggesting we move forward and do something that might make logical sense to bring Lincoln City together.
I've taken note that that would be something good to discuss if we can get a joint work study together.
Yes, I would love that to be a topic with the council.
Possible dates for that?
I would actually just, if, are there specific days of the week that could, our Mondays, an opportune?
When were you planning on doing this? This month or next month or?
Well, I need to, I need to see what your availability is and then see if we can get the council to agree. So our Mondays, if we looked in the afternoon or in the evenings, it would be, if we're looking at September, potentially the thirtieth.
I'm not here.
Of September, yeah.
That would work for me.
I'm not here.
I'm retired, I don't care.
I'm, yeah, basically from the twenty-third to the sixth, I'm not here.
We do not have, when is the, Columbus Days, so October seventh?
Good.
Yep, that would work.
Are Mondays okay for you, Marcy?
Mondays are okay.
Okay. And Mondays are fine for you, Miles?
Any day is fine.
Any day is fine. I wish I had your guys' calendars.
All you have to do is work for sixty-some odd years, no problem.
Be fine, Lindsay, on that?
Monday, the seventh?
Would it need to be
What time in the evening?
Would it need to be in the evening? I do know that the city council is considering daytime work studies now, so I want to ask that.
I could do either one, afternoon, evening.
Okay.
How long are we talking about? Is this an all-day affair?
No, I hope not.
Oh, good lord.
I would like, I'm thinking two hours max.
Okay.
At the most.
Afternoon, evening, it's fine.
Evening, evening.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so October seventh. And then would, I think it's too soon to be prepared for getting an agenda out if we were to look at September sixteenth. So I will, I will shoot for October seventh right now and communicate via email with you guys if we need to look at some different dates. Yeah.
All right.
And commissioners, one thing that might be good for you to think about between now and that time, when you're thinking about existing signs in the city and the new sign ordinance and how the new sign ordinance will improve signage, bear in mind that the new sign ordinance will not have any impact on all of the existing signs.
Right.
Because they're all non-conforming. And part of what prevents non-conforming signs from being improved is the fact that they will lose their size and height, thus they stay in the form that they are now. So that is something to consider when you're thinking of, of, in other words, the new sign ordinance is only going to impact new signs.
Right.
So when you drive through town and you see all the signs that you don't like, the new sign ordinance won't change any of those.
Right.
If something could be incorporated into the new sign ordinance that would be more beneficial to the business owners than the current sign ordinance, perhaps that would encourage them to replace their non-conforming signs with conforming signs.
Right.
I will say, just from my, and I have visited with over ninety businesses, keeping the restrictions on the size of signs and the height of signs will not encourage the replacement of any of the existing signs. So I would just, I'm just pointing that out, food for thought.
So Anne-Marie, does that, does that also follow for abandoned signs?
It does. If they make the abandoned sign, if they put it into use, it's no longer abandoned.
Right, but there, but I know one of the topics that came up at the workshop was trying to do something, dealing with the signs that are existing signs for no longer existing businesses.
Structures.
And, and empty frames of signs, so there's
All they need to do is add a face to it.
Okay.
And so if it's too tall or if it's too big, if they add a face to it so that it's now in use, it's no longer abandoned and it, and it can continue.
Okay. And isn't there some types of signs that there's a temporary ordinance that is sunsetting at the end of October, maybe?
October eighth, twenty nineteen, and those are only feather banners. Feather banners are prohibited after October
After October eighth, all feather banners be prohibited. Okay. All right, because that seems to be a rather controversial topic in the comments.
Yes, the feather banners do seem to be a large divide as well as the illumination. There wasn't clear direction on, do we, do we want backlit pan-channel signs and the aesthetics that come with those? Or continue the upward lighting into the sky?
Marcy?
What I noticed, reading through all the comments on the feather banner, to me, that one stood out as the issue that there's the largest disagreement. And what was interesting to me is that there are a lot of people that really don't like the look of them because they do look cheap and they start to fall apart. And as a business owner, I'm not the biggest fan, but is it effective and cheap to bring business in? Absolutely. Like, it makes a huge difference. But also I'm, I feel a lot of people are stuck in that they don't, that was another thing I noticed, is how many of the business owners that responded didn't understand. It was at least a third didn't understand what they're allowed to do with their signs. And, and, you know, reading through all of that, I kind of thought, well, gosh, if there was, if it was made easier for all the businesses to know what they can do and, and to have a better-looking sign, like for me and my business, what I personally would really like is an eternally lit sign. I think they look really nice. I think putting the light exterior onto it also looks kind of cheap and it's lighting up the whole rundown district of Ocean Lake. But, you know, and, you know, I look at prehistoric and I look at their nice, beautiful letters on there and I think, you know, like this Bar and Grill example right there, that would look really nice. And I think it puts less light out in the atmosphere. They're more expensive to get, but I think it would really clean it up. And so having options available and making it simple, it seems like it'd be a win-win.
Yeah.
Because sometimes the, it seems that there, there could be easier options. I noticed A-frames, people don't seem to be as bothered by A-frames yet I can have a feather banner in front of my business right now. I can't put an A-frame out, I have two of them in my basement. I can't use it.
Right.
But that seems something that like, I think business owners, if you give them a little bit, you know, well, you can have the A-frame, but, you know, maybe shrink the size down to eight feet so they're not sixteen feet tall on the side of the highway.
Yeah, and I, your point's well-taken that it's complicated. And I was struck by that too, that the number of business owners that don't understand the sign ordinance and what they're allowed to have and what they're not allowed to have. So that tells me that it needs to be simplified. It'd be nice, you know, if wishes were fishes, we'd have money to help the owners to, you know, take care of some of the signs that are in disrepair or that clearly need to be replaced, but
As far as I know, there is money available through urban development loans and whatnot. I don't know if they're granted, but there are
Loans, yeah, loans.
Big ones available and, you know, facade improvement and things like that. So, but there's also, you know, the education that those resources are available.
And, and the absentee tenants or landlords who aren't particularly enamored with having anybody do anything on the outside of the building they own, even their own tenants.
I spoke to someone yesterday who owns a property very close in Ocean Lake where my business is. It was actually one of the signs that was pictured on the thing. And, and it was an issue of trying to get it done, but the, it's, the structure of it needs actually worked on and that that creates some kind of, well, I was even confused about what is allowed in maintenanceing those already existing signs of, you know, well, do you have to build something around it just to hold it in place instead of just putting up something newer? I mean, if you're going to allow it there anyway, not being taken care of and all being rusty, what's the harm in allowing those people, I think, which might be what you were kind of saying, of saying, go ahead and replace it with something brand-new?
Right.
And now it's compliant and it is
And you can keep the same size and you can keep the same height, yeah. I think there's some room for that.
But then you can put the standard in that it does need to be maintained.
Right, yeah. Okay. Any other comments on the signs?
Well, yeah, again, could you clarify for me which, why there's two freestanding pole types, what it means?
Yeah, in the materials
What page?
On the sign survey, item seven-one-B, it starts on packet page eighty-four.
Okay, just a second, we passed it.
The freestanding or the monument ones that you had questions on?
Well, no, I was just, there's two categories called freestanding pole types and people had varying things.
On page, on page eighty-five, you can see that in the graphics, there is, there's actually three graphics that show freestanding pole sign types there.
That's what you mean.
And so this one is a monument pole sign, the very top one that says Newtons.
Yeah.
This would be a, kind of like a blade pole sign would be the middle one with the smaller scale, you know, four feet in height, kind of real estate type, I guess. And then the large one over to the right is about twenty, twenty-five feet tall, pole style.
Okay, one more thing then. When people responded to the survey, is that the way they were responding?
Yeah.
The first one was the pole sign type that I would call, you know, two poles?
Right.
And the second one would be the ones, the ones standing straight up?
When you took the survey, the pictures were identified by question, by type, and you picked the picture with the type.
Okay, so when I read the survey, I can look at those and know which one they said. When I, they said they either loathed them or loved them or whatever.
When you took, yes, when you took the survey, it was very clear. The way Survey Monkey did the responses is, it's, when you're looking at the responses, it's harder to match it up. But actually taking the survey, it was very clear.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, do you need more from us tonight?
No, I got a date. I got some conversation.
Well, just to point out to you how difficult this is, Marcy says that she likes that backlit sign that says Bar and Grill. I loathe that back sign that says Bar and Grill. I like the ones that are mounted on two poles.
And that's the essence of the issue.
I understand that. I understand that.
All right, so we're going to have a joint workshop, work study with the council on this, that'll be fun.
Yes, and I will, I will email as soon as I get some conversation and communication from city manager on, and him from the city council. It may not be until next week that he's able to bring it up during the regular
Is Monday the only date that they would like to do these things?
No, I'm sure, I'm sure that there's potentially other meeting dates, but their work studies have historic, from what I've seen, historically been on the
Mondays?
Third or fifth, yeah, on Mondays, on their non-meeting Mondays.
On their non-meeting days, okay, that makes sense.
All right, any new business?
Back to the agenda. No new business. You will have, I can bring that up at the next meeting.
Okay, and you have planning commission training, you've given us something.
Yes. Planning commission training. With the new commissioners, I wanted to again provide you with a copy of the March twenty-fifteen Rules and Procedures of the Planning Commission. This is a reference document for your information. And then we also have provided for you this evening, Lincoln City Municipal Code, Chapter two-point-zero-eight, which is the governing laws over the body of the Planning Commission. And so, and those were reference materials, please read through them, email me Email me, um, just myself, not, don't make a quorum if you have questions or, uh, comments or, or want to make a proposal to amend it.
And, and, and the test is when?
Well, let's see if we can get past 10:01 tonight.
All right. Reports and comments, presentation?
So in the materials this evening, because we had advertised, um, the public hearing for the design review, but needed to postpone it again to allow for enough time for legal review, we are providing you the draft ordinance in its entirety. However, um, we wanted to, just, this is just a provision, providing it for you in advance of the meeting, make it available to the public. We'll be updating the website, um, very shortly and, and sending emails out this week to those that have participated, letting them know it's updated, where to find the draft standards. And, uh, so we can start garnering some more public comment, um, from our community on this.
And this is, um, reflective of the one that I emailed to you, I believe, two weeks ago with some additional changes from the city manager.
So, um, would you like us to, um, provide you with comments in an email format of...
Email would be fine. It would become part of the public record. Or if you have questions to prepare for deliberation on the 17th, if we can get through the public testimony, feel free to, to give me a call or shoot me an email with those questions too.
And Marie just came into the office and talked with me about her questions and...
Can you provide us a map of the high-risk streets or identify a spot where we can find that map?
It should be in there.
You can find that map on, in the draft ordinance. Now, just for your reference, before you go to hit print, this is 118-page ordinance.
Yeah. And you thought that was easy.
Um, the high-risk streets are found in...
What pages?
While she's looking for the page. It took two years for us to ever get this.
It was on page, page 26 of the ordinance.
Oh, yeah, 26 of the ordinance, correct, page 144. That teeny, tiny little map. So, okay, all right.
We can, I bet this map, this map is actually pulled from our, um, non-motorized in our transportation plan, so there, it would be available in the larger format on the city website, yeah.
Okay, perfect. I think that was the only one that I needed. Oh, and it references Exhibit A. What's Exhibit A?
Uh, Exhibit A, that's something that the city attorney is, it has to do with the findings. So you don't need to worry, yeah, and you don't need to worry about it.
Okay, all right, so I'll, I'll, um, put my comments together in an email. Should I copy all of the commissioners on it?
No, you should not.
Oh, no.
That becomes a walking quorum.
Well, yeah, but this is, well, yeah, you know what I'm wrong.
Not without an advertised meeting.
Right, okay.
So this comes back on the 17th?
Comes back to us on the 17th, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Future agenda items, as long as we're talking about the 17th?
I will have the Surf Tides Rezone Public Hearing.
What was that?
The Surf Tides Rezone. They own two lots across the street from their hotel and they've requested a rezone from its current zone to our recreation commercial. Mm-hmm.
You tell them that because of the houses there?
But they currently, each tax lot has a duplex on it.
Yeah. What's its zone now?
It's residential, R15.
Is there anything else on our agenda on the 17th? Seems like there was. This is coming back with the design of the...
Design review, public hearing and deliberation. And then depending on where we get with the signs, we may have, uh, um, something to present in advance of a work, work study.
And the North Lincoln City land use?
Correct, the deliberation and, and the final order will be on for the 17th. We'll be busy enough without signs.
All right, anything else?
I, I would like to make a comment that Kate, you have been a rock in my stabilization, taking on the position here, and I appreciate all of your patience and learning and explaining to me. We're going to miss you dearly and, um, I hope when you're traveling around the country and you come back through to Lincoln City, you swing by and say hello.
Are you keeping your cell phone number?
Yes, I am.
Just in case. Um, I would echo that. I mean, I, um, you're like Yoda, you know? I mean, it's like...
Much prettier, much, much prettier.
You have all the answers and, and I, I can't tell you how many times I've sat in these meetings and someone asks a question and everybody's head turns to look at Kate because you have the answer. And that's been during the meetings and when I've come in to the counter or, or, um, called you for something, um, it, you don't even seem to have to look it up. You just know. So that, that's a skill that we're going to miss absolutely. We will try to soldier on, but, but know that you've been integral to our success and we're going to really miss you.
Well, thank you. I'm a little overwhelmed at how nice everyone is. It's been a good 13 years. I've seen a thing or two. Heard a thing or two. But no, it's been great and you have a lot of really interesting projects ahead. And I will, anyone who knows me knows that I will watch it from time to time.
And, and the book comes out when?
I don't know, but if I get Wi-Fi in campgrounds, I will watch your meetings.
Wow, that's, you'd be so bored.
Oh, no, no, no. I just, I have an inquiring mind. But no, this is a really good group. You guys do really good work and you have a good team here and, um, I think it'll be good. So I'll miss everybody, but I wish everybody well.
Well, we have cake.
I think everybody who has, uh, in Lincoln City has worked with the planning department or interacted with the planning department is going to miss you, yeah.
And Theodore West is going to miss you, so... All right, anything else? Any other comments, concerns, questions?
One of the things I'd like to say is I love doing all of this with technology rather than lugging around 235 pages. Yay, technology!
That's one of the things that I've done. When we started here, I delivered packets every two weeks to people's houses and sometimes they were this thick. I don't miss that.
We're doing it in the villages at Cascade Head. We had like four notebooks, full-size notebooks, all of it completely full.
Okay, we're adjourned. Cake!